Good evening. It's July the 7th. It probably is 5:30 now in the city of Fergus Falls chambers. The first item on the agenda is the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. And we welcome Eric Ogura.
I will more or less pray if you would join with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for a beautiful summer and this beautiful place to live. Lord, I thank you for all the people here who are serving in the city. Lord, would you please strengthen them for this meeting tonight? Give them wisdom and unity. Lord, we pray that good and wise decisions would be made for the people of this community and that we would all be able to live the peaceful and godly lives that you call us to. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen. And now the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. The first item on the agenda is open forum. Where anyone wishing to speak on a topic that's not already on the agenda, please come forward, state your name and the city in which you live.
Mayor, councilpeople. Dwayne Cookman, live in Fergus Falls. From the town hall meeting on the 30th, I had a couple of questions. Mayor showed me a, what appeared to be a bike trail alongside of a railroad that they had up there. And I'm just wondering, has there been any more discussion with Otter Tail Valley Railroad?
We haven't progressed that far. We are working on getting the crossings. And that is going to take, hopefully, if we're fortunate, we can get an agreement on the crossings this year. And the work wouldn't get done until actually 27, because they're that far out. And once we get an agreement on the crossings, then I'll work on the trail.
Okay, I'll be here so you don't forget about it.
Yeah. That's why I gave you a picture.
Councilperson Kildy, did you take a look at the, because you were, I brought up the assessment of the railroad.
On the railroad, I did look at that. And I think the big thing comes down to is, is we're not the ones that set the value on that. And so, I mean, yes, their value has gone down, but I don't know that we, and maybe, Andrew, you can speak to that, we have no ability to set the value on railroad property.
But can you question what your value in Fergus Falls is compared to other ones? And I'm just like, I would say, hey, our property in Fergus Falls is just as valuable as X over here.
I just don't know that we have an avenue for doing that, do we?
I don't think we have standing.
Okay.
To make that request of the assessor, private citizens could ask them.
I think the more people, in my opinion, I guess I can say, the more people ask the question, why is it so low, but our taxes have went up? I don't see that parallel.
Okay.
Just a question. The more people we ask the state, because the state does those values, perhaps we might get some traction.
We can talk to the county.
Okay.
I'll talk to Commissioner Sullivan and see what we're gonna.
And we used Pebble Lake Swimming Area. And I was like, really looks good out there. But I said, you got some docks out there. And I asked, oh, so much fish, are you going to be using those? No, swim at your own risk. So could we repurpose one of those and put on the end of Broadway by Stanton? Because when they switched out, when they cleaned it up, they put riprock in, I mean, big boulders. Where before, we could launch kayaks and canoes from the north side of the river. We didn't have to go to the other side. Would there be a possibility to entertain, maybe put one of those sections of dock there so we could launch kayaks and canoes?
We can bring that up to Guy.
And that's, there's a culvert right here. There's a sewer culvert. Right to the west of that is where they typically launch them. If you could take a look at that. And this is in reference to what Mayor Hicks gave me about the trail.
I'll talk to Guy on it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, thank you. I'll just give, as Dwayne Cookman brought up, we did have our first town hall meeting. It was successful. We had a number of residents come in and ask questions. There's follow-up items on that. There was questions about additional charging potential for different, additional outlets in downtown for, if there are kind of food vendors down there that need more power than what some of the light poles have. And there was a suggestion to look at whether or not we could put, get somebody to put an EV charger down there and whether it could be a combination of EV charger and outlet for food trucks. Passed that message on to Guy Taylor, and he's going to look at that. But he's also going to look at what it would cost if somebody did want additional power and what a temporary service would be. They still own the equipment that was used at the RTC. A question got brought up about opportunity zone redistricting. And I think Councilmember Mortenson brought up that, you know, that would be a good task for our newly appointed EDA, once they, once we get there. There was another question about additional flyers from a communications standpoint. The new online system that we're, we're in the process of switching over to would actually allow for the creation of online versions of that through a portal. And that's something that our intern Ella is going to work on creating a template for that. Got brought up about a welcoming committee. And this hasn't necessarily been a city task in the past. It's usually individuals that have got banded together to do some of that. And I'm not sure that that's, there was appetite to change, change that. Also got brought up about technology upgrades in this room to allow for Teams calls as opposed to Zoom. With one of the legislative changes that got made this session, it's possible for council members to attend a meeting remotely as long as they go through certain criteria, which would be to advertise the time and place where they would be accessing the meeting from, so that other people could join them. So that's something to look at. And then another idea that got brought up was within, you know, the funds that we have available for preservation of the RTC was to do an engineering 3D scan of the building that would allow developers to obviously make those changes within the program. And it would be virtual. And so we talked to more engineering on that. And they are getting a quotation together to bring along with those that StanTech are also working on. So that was, it was a good meeting, and thank you for those that attended. And the next meeting will be on the 29th of July. And I think one of those other things that got brought about, the communication on that. So I think we're simply going to post them all as potentially full council. So that if there is more council members attend, we had a good turnout on the first one. So if council members then wish to do it, they can do. So that was good, and thank you again for those that came. And as we've started the town hall meetings, we're going to stop doing the two minutes at the end of this meeting. So that was kind of the premise of having the two minutes was to help us get to that point. And that's where we're going to be. The next item is, and I thank Councilmember Kramer for bringing this up. I too wanted to touch base on safety. We've had a number of incidents in the community of late between pedestrians and bikes. And I think Councilmember Kramer has got something to add to that.
Thank you, Mayor. I received this letter from a constituent in Ward 3. He had had some words before this, but I just want to kind of start here. And it said additionally, I spoke with Minnesota Senator Rasmussen, looking at it from a state level regarding e-bikes. He said the proposal had merit, and he would discuss with colleagues when they reconvene. Now I'm going to kind of talk to you what the letter is about. Talks about bicycle safety. There needs to be a message communicated to downtown cyclists regarding no bikes or e-bikes allowed on downtown businesses, district sidewalks. I think this should apply to Riverfront Park as well, especially e-bikes, which I have observed riding in the shelter. A recommendation to hire a college student or older to serve as a bike, bicycle safety officer. The responsibility would primarily be monitoring the business district, but could spread out into neighborhoods as well if there were bicycling concerns in those neighborhoods. Individual hired for the position would obviously need to be aware of driving laws as they relate to biking. Just a note of experience, it says here, I was nearly passed by a cyclist that was cruising down the sidewalk on East Lincoln. I was leaving Wheelander's Jewelry and peeked around the entrance before stepping out into the sidewalk. At that moment, a cyclist comes storming right in front of me. I would have gotten smashed, possibly seriously injured, if I hadn't simply proceeded, if I had simply proceeded to the sidewalk without looking first. Perhaps there could be some signage on streets, like quote, no biking on sidewalks. And then under e-bike safety, he has, proposing the city through proper channels would consider an ordinance restricting e-bike travel on public streets in the city to 16 and over with valid driver's license. A friend of mine recently witnessed an e-bike operator of no more than 12 years old, 12 years of age, cruising down a public street, no less than a sustained 25 miles per hour. Inexperienced operators on a machine that can speed along at 25 to 30 miles an hour can be potentially catastrophic hazard. As you know, the city reported two bicycle vehicle collisions in two days. This is biking season, and there are many bicyclists that have no regard for the traffic laws. The goal here would be provide a safer environment for both pedestrians and vehicle drivers and bicyclists. Now, I can, I've known this individual for many, many, many years. I actually grew up with him. And him and his brother were avid cyclists. So, you know, they, they've always played by the rules. They know what needs to be done, how that should be, they should conduct themselves. And so I think that brings a lot of credence to this letter. Also too, you know, I do remember that there used to be a, I forget his name. He was a younger fellow that I think worked through the city or the police department that did some enforcement on bicycle laws and rules. Also too, you know, we've, we've spent a lot of time on these bike lanes in this town. They can be used. You know, I guess, what is that, does that mean e-bikes? Does that mean just pedal bikes? What is that, you know? We've got these, these trails, we have these lanes, and they're going on sidewalks. So I can see his concern, and I can see his disappointment that things aren't being followed yet. We have all these trails for the bikes and these lanes. So thank you. That was the last little bit was my comment, and the rest was the letter from the constituent in Ward 3.
Thank you, Al. With that, we can move on to the approval of the agenda. Has anybody got any comments on that?
Your Honor, I'd like to pull a few things off the consent agenda, if that's all right. I think we have kind of a short meeting tonight. I'd just like to clarify a couple of things, if that's all right with you.
Sure, which one?
Number 3, 6, 9, 10, 11, 12. 9, 10, 11, 12 will be quick, they're together. But 3 and 6, I just want to be able to discuss a few things if some of the representatives are here.
3, 6.
9, 10, 11, 12. But 9 through 12 are together.
Thank you. With that, would somebody care to second the agenda?
Second.
Thank you, Al. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those against, same sign. Every none. Motion, agenda is approved with those items being pulled. Next item is public hearings, of which there are none. The next item after that is awards a bid, there are none. The next item is petitions and communications. Resolution acknowledging the retirement and 12-plus years of service from Deborah Zachman. Whereas Deborah Zachman has submitted her intent to retire effective July 18, 2025. And whereas Deb was hired as a permanent part-time library assistant, number one, on December 31, 2012. And she has held that position throughout her career with the city of Fergus Falls. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Fergus Falls, Minnesota, to accept the resignation of Deborah Zachman and thank her for her 12-plus years of dedicated service as an employee of the city of Fergus Falls. The above aforementioned resolution was offered at a regular city, regular meeting of the city council held on July 7, 2025 by Councilmember Jim Fish, who moved its adoption and was seconded by Councilmember Laurel Jobe. And adopted by the following vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oh, roll call, sorry.
Yes.
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 All right, the resolution is approved. I suppose it did say resolution. With that, Deb, would you care, as you are in the audience, is there anything you would care to say?
I just wanted to say that it has been a joy and an honor to serve the people of Fergus Falls and the surrounding area at the library. It's just been a dream job, and I really want to thank the city council for the support that you give the library, because we really appreciate what you do for all of us, not just the employees, but the patrons. Because we get so many wonderful comments from people, both locals and from out of the area. What a wonderful library we have. So thank you for your support. And it's, like I said, it's been a joy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Deb, for your service. The next item is a resolution regarding the retirement of Colleen Conley Bruce-Fenn. Whereas Colleen has submitted her intent to retire effective July 5, which is passed. And whereas Colleen has hired as a records technician for the police department on June 15, 2005, a position she has held throughout her career with the city of Fergus Falls. And now therefore be resolved to the city council of the city of Fergus Falls, Minnesota, to accept the resignation of Colleen and thank her for 20 years of dedicated service as an employee of the city of Fergus Falls. The above and aforementioned resolution was offered at a regular meeting of the city council held on July 7, 2025 by Councilmember.
I can do it.
Oh, you would like to do it?
I don't care.
No? Well, if you don't care, then.
Well, he's Scott Ray's hand.
Then Jim will do it. We want somebody that cares.
I do care. I don't care if he does it. I saw Scott's hand.
Yeah, and then who would like to second it?
I would love to.
Oh, really? Thank you. It's seconded by Laurel. And is adopted, adopted by the following vote. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 And the resolution is approved. I don't believe that Colleen is here. So with that, we will move on. Items on the consent agenda. Motion approving the open and closed minutes from June 16, 2025, city council meetings. Motion approving licenses. Resolution approving a combined preliminary and final plat for Center Point Edition located 1701 West Lincoln Avenue with conditions as recommended by the planning commission. Resolution approving a variance to add a six-foot covered front porch encroaching into the required front setback in an R2 zone located at 112, 1222 North Lake Street, as recommended by the planning commission. A resolution approving a combination, a combined preliminary and final plat for FF Ventures Edition at 528 Western Avenue with conditions as recommended by the planning commission. A motion temporarily appointing Mike Mortenson to the personnel committee for the hiring of an economic development director. And that would be it. So with that, would somebody care to make that resolution?
I will.
Oh, thank you, Al. And seconded by Scott Rachel's. All roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. The next item is Councilmember Mortenson would like to talk a little about item number three. Resolution approving a conditional use permit to operate a car, truck, service, and repair shop in a B2 service business district located at 1701 West Lincoln Avenue with conditions as recommended by the planning commission.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate it. The reason that I pulled number three and number six is because these two entities are very, very important to this community. And I'm so grateful for their involvement of coming to the community and doing the things that they're going to do. But the council just hasn't had a lot of time to discuss it. I know it went from the planning commission to the consent agenda. And I want to make sure that we as a city and as a city council that we're doing everything we can to make both of these projects become very successful. So one of the things that I have a question for on number three, I don't know if there's a representative in the crowd that can help us or if someone within the city administration can help us. But I need to know, do they have an intent for that second lot that is there at this time? Or is that second lot going to be just platted and put on the open market? This is something that's important for economic development in our city. If they have an intent, it would be nice to know that at this time. And then the other thing I want to know is, looking at their design and their proposal, they didn't show any access coming off of Western Avenue. They showed almost a shared access coming from the north side, which is on kind of the service road, and then just an individual access on the east side. And one of the things that I want to know is if they need to have an access on the south side, or if the two lots are going to use that one access that's on the north. Just some, some kind of clarification, so I kind of know where they're going, where economic development will be going with both of these plots. Again, this is very important to our city, but I'm just hoping for some clarification, because we haven't had a chance to look at this.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Sherri Arons with Westwood Professional Services. I'm here representing the Les Schwab Development. What I can, I cannot tell you what the second lot will be. At this time, you know, I'm just representing the Les Schwab property. What I can tell you about the access points. Les Schwab does require, would, for their circulation and truck movements and, you know, vehicle movements into the site, it is imperative that we have the south access. We do have a canopy area on the back side that basically larger, like RVs, you know, or larger vehicles will pull into for service. And then basically what they can do is just access out to the north. Per the city, I believe it was asked that we provide a shared access on the north side, and that's why it kind of sits there so that there wasn't two access points. I mean, if, if immutable, Les Schwab can pull that apart, and we can do two separate access points on there. But I think we need to work with the city on that, and we're open to working with the city on that. I'm just going to back up and say Les Schwab is really excited to come to the city. Al, per your question, they started in 1952 in Plainville, Oregon. They have 500 locations in about 12 states. They hire, typically have anywhere from 10 to 18 employees, profit sharing for their employees. They're big into community donations and charitable events. And they're just very excited to come to the community.
I appreciate that. Did we have on the plat, someone with more engineering, did we have on the plat an entrance from the south? Is there one dedicated coming off of Western Avenue?
There is a curb cut there currently.
Okay.
But there's no access point, because it kind of goes up a hill.
Okay.
With the development, you know, we'll be upgrading that site to provide the access on the south.
So you're going to come off Western, you'll, you'll get there?
We'll come off, well, there's actually three access points.
Yes, okay. So that's what I was wondering, because I didn't see it on the, on the planning. The other thing is, you're open to two accesses on that north side? You're not set with just the one individual? The reason I'm saying that is, it looks like both pieces are about two and a half acres or 2.3 acres. And I want to make sure that we do what's best for you, Les Schwab. But I also want to make sure we do what's best for that next lot that's next door. If they look for an individual access to that lot, and they don't want to share it for whatever their business is, I just want the city to be aware of that or the engineers thinking about that. So that was my question tonight, to just talk about a little bit. We're at that point right now where that could be changed or not changed. I'm not the one with the information for that. But what I'm looking at is making sure that second lot is just as valuable for both your business sharing it, but also for our community. I'd hate to see that thing get kind of landlocked off with just one, one access. But that's just my thoughts tonight. I was just thinking.
Yeah, yeah, and we, like I said, we'll work with the, with the city on that. I do have, the representatives are watching on YouTube about Les Schwab. And what he just said is, as far as that second lot, the developer will market that for additional use, whether to sell it or to lease it. You know, that's the information that we have on it right now.
Yeah, that's awesome. That's great. And, and I'm looking, from a, from a city standpoint, we can't thank you enough. And if they're watching, I can't thank them enough for what they're doing. I, I want to see us get two great things on those lots. And I want to make sure both are, are very, very prosperous in our community for a long time. That was the only reason to discuss it tonight. I'm 100% for this project.
Okay. Well, thank you. I will sit unless you, anyone has any more questions. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No other questions, but welcome. Thank you very much.
Would somebody care to offer that resolution?
I'll offer that.
Laurel, would somebody care to second it? Thank you, Al. Roll call.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. The next item is the resolution approving a variance to reduce the required 10-foot setbacks to a five-foot along property lines and to zero feet between newly platted lots at 528 Western Avenue with conditions as approved by the planning commission. Again, over to Mike.
Your Honor, thank you again. I hear number six, very important to our community. I want the constituents and the people of the city to know that this, this is a great thing for a community. But again, the council didn't get a lot of time to talk about this. The two things that I have in mind, and I'll have no issue with the easements or the setbacks. In fact, I want to do whatever we can to make this come to light. The question I have is, when I was reading through some of the agreements, I want to know, is the second tenant set up at this time? Or do we have one tenant here and we're waiting for a second tenant as time goes along? That's number one. And number two is, I noticed that the access to the Merrick Inn goes right through, would be the south side of the parking lot, along with some of the parking spaces. And I want to make sure that that entrance is the same as it has been for the Merrick Inn for size. And also, will they be allowed to put some signage in that area? Because again, we want this to happen. I just want to make sure that we've looked or had a chance to talk about a few things before we go forward tonight.
Good evening. I'm David Carlin. I'm the developer with Venture Pass Partners. I don't have any on, anybody on YouTube to protect me, so I'm going to have to handle this on my own. I, I think there's a lot of rumors about who our primary tenant is, and they're.
I, I think there's a lot of rumors about who our primary tenant is, and they're, they're probably true, but they, they like to, they like to control the public relations and the message. We do have another tenant that has traveled along with them and us. You searched around, you'd probably figure it out who it is, but it's kind of the same. They want to control that message. It's, it's absolutely not cannabis. I can tell you that. And, and frankly, you know, we've got a similar project we're doing in Monticello right now. We've got a project that we just broke ground in Alex. In both those cases, we had that second tenant in tow. But the primary tenant is going so fast and furious, they want us, they want us in the ground by August 1. We just, they didn't want to hold up. We didn't have time to catch up. But we're, you know, fairly confident we'll have something caught up to start there by, by spring. They're trying to get, I mean, they want Blacktop in before the batch plants close this year, want to open first quarter. We, we drew the construction drawings before we even got this far with the city, which is a little unsettling, maybe a little bit reckless, but we're, you know, confident enough with the user and, you know, the work we've done with staff and the gang that we're happy to do that. So I, hopefully that answers the, the first question. Relative to the hotel, there's a, and this, you know, part of the reason we got to the variance as we did is, I've never seen so many weird easements and things, you know, checker boarding a site, and that was frankly why we got a little bit up behind, just trying to get all that figured out. But, and we've been working with the, with, with Nick Claire's and the hotel group, and they're, they've been great, and they're really happy to see, you know, what, what, what we're creating. They do have, they do have an easement, and we're, we, they've agreed that we can modify that easement to allow for some parking. And that parking's going to be, you know, not primary parking, it's going to be overflow parking. And, you know, they're comfortable with the width of the driveway that'll continue to function as it, as it has in the past. And we're comfortable, and the tenants are comfortable with it too, so we're not anticipating any problems with that. Relative to sign, they, I mean, they do have that ground monument signed, you know, that's been their entrance, and what we're doing doesn't interfere with that. They haven't, they haven't had a request or any other inquiry about any additional signage, but to the extent we needed to do it, there was room for it. We could certainly accommodate that.
Yeah, I appreciate the comments, and I appreciate your, representing your tenant, and I want you to say to your tenant, thank you for coming to the community. One of the things, the reason I asked about the second location is, one of the big pushes for this council in this city is to economic development. And one of the things I wanted to make sure that we were doing as a city is that we were here for you if you were not filling that on your own. Same with Les Schwab. If they were going to fill that on their own, they were going to do it, I wanted to know that. It looks like you're partaking in it yourself, but we're always here if you need help with it on that end. And I also wanted to make sure that to make this project a-go, that that easement in that hotel that they were being served, but also they weren't hindering you. And since we hadn't had any time to talk about it, I appreciate the discussion today.
No, I appreciate everybody, the staff, everybody in Fergus Falls has been great.
Good. Appreciate it.
We don't always come across that either, so.
Good to hear.
That's great.
Any other questions?
No, let's get her done. I make a motion, we do this. I think it's exciting for Fergus, and the rumors are wonderful, and.
Second. Thank you.
Quit talking, Laurel.
It's awesome.
Roll call.
Yes.
Joe. Yes.
Yes.
Since it's not cannabis, sure.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
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 And thank you. The resolution is approved. The next kind of four items, I think we'll have to do them probably as individual, was the number nine is a resolution approving task order number two for construction services for More Engineering, Inc., for Public Improvement, number 5381, 2025 Mill and Overlay.
Yeah, I appreciate it, Your Honor. They, I know I probably lumped them together because they're all connected to engineering, but I think we can just go through the one and answer the questions, and then you can bing, bing, bing through all of them. One of the things that I want to make sure that I'm doing for the constituents of this city is make sure that I am understanding everything in, in its entirety when it comes to having an engineering firm that is not, not a city engineer. And so one of the things I want to talk about is, we're doing, in my mind, some pretty low-level, you know, seal coating, mill and overlay, and different things that had been talked about for quite a while. One of the things that I want to talk about is, are these things that our city engineer that we used to have in-house would take care of? Brian would come in front of us, make a thing, we would make a motion on it, he'd go out for bids, and then it would just go on its way? Is that the normal protocol of how that worked? Mr. Bremseth, maybe you can help us.
Depending on the project, Your Honor, Councilmember Mortensen, specifically to a mill and overlay project, we typically would go out for bids, and then we would have internal staff that would work directly with the contractor. And we would have our internal staff onsite doing the construction, administration, and oversight. On bigger projects, most of our projects, we had outside representation from firms, in which case they would have staff onsite throughout the entirety of the project, and we would compensate them for that.
Yeah. And for mill and overlay, though, it used to be like Brian would come in front of us and we'd, we'd vote on it. One of the things that I want to look at is, when we see here, we have more engineering that's, that's doing what they called administrative work, and it went to, I think the first one had a fee of $20,000, the second one, task order two had a fee of, or three had $7,250. Task order number four, which was Scenic Drive, had a, had an order of $20,743, and task order number five had $16,000. So what it came to was a total bill for four of these roads, or four of these task orders, to $64,943, about $65,000. What I need to know as a council member is, are we used to this? Is, is this the process we have signed up for? Is this above and beyond the $16,000 that we pay them monthly as a basic services? When I looked at this, I would have assumed that a lot of these costs would have been part of the monthly services. So I need some clarification to why that isn't that way, and just some guidance so I can go back to the constituents to say why.
Yeah, Your Honor, Councilmember Mortensen, this is the side that doesn't fall within the general engineering. This is the project-specific side. These are all projects that have been initiated by the city council and have already been out for bid. And typically, if going forward, Moore would be charging us that 15% based on the average bid price that we talked about. In these cases, they're proposing half of that fee because the design work is already done, and they're only doing the second half of that, which is construction administration. So you will see these costs for all projects going forward in a new task order. We're just going to number them, as you see here, two, three, four, five. As new projects come forward, they'll have their own task order. They'll be specific to that project, and they'll be that 15% of the project costs like we talked about.
The question I have then is, is like a seal coat project, that's something that, is that not something that we have our city engineer from Moore to, to handle that without an extra task order? It seems pretty straightforward, and we do a lot of street work. And I just want to make sure that I'm aware of when we're doing street work, that we'll always have this added cost on top of it over our monthly fee, and that's, that's correct?
Yeah, I, I may defer to Tyson specifically on what goes into a seal coat project because I don't completely know that. But I will say, you know, there's, there's the bidding process, there's the onsite, you know, dedicated individual overseeing construction, working with the contractor. So it really is treated like a, a city project. We initiate that on an annual basis as a, a public improvement project, and it, it, you know, a lot of like seal coat, that's a pretty basic project, that's choosing the streets. All of these other ones where you're talking about reconstructions, you're talking about mill and overlays, there's a design component involved in all of those, and those would certainly be coming before you separately on an annual basis. But Tyson, if you want to talk specifically about seal coats, that might be helpful.
Yeah, depending on the size of the project, you pretty much still follow all the same components that you would if you were doing a mill and overlay, or you were doing any, excuse me, any other reconstruction project. Seal coats are, I wouldn't call it, I mean, they're considered a maintenance item, but depending on what happens, we're still administering the contract, we're still doing partial payment estimates, we're still working with a contractor. I think it'd be one thing if, if internal city staff was potentially doing that, and we didn't have any sort of an administrative burden. But we're still administering that contract the same way we would administer any other contract. And to some degree, the design is probably a little bit more simplistic than what you would see in other projects, but at the same respect, it's, it's comparable to what the total construction cost would be from a project. So the way that we came forward on agreeing on what items were going to be included and not included with, within, with respect to the $16,000 a month, pretty much everything that's administrative, you know, all the project reviews, MS4 compliance, there is a litany, the CIP tool, all the GIS, there is a, and we can basically bring a, a detailed listing for council if, if that's something we want to go over, you know, at a, at a committee of the whole meeting, to kind of give you some clarity on what is all included. I'd like to say that there is a significant amount of effort that goes into the administrative portion of it. But all the project-related stuff is, if it's deemed a project, we're treating it as the way that the task orders are coming forward today.
So part of the, you, you talk about, in these task orders, you talk about it as an administrative service, is what you call it. But you said the base, the base salary is administrative as well. Is there any way that we can get some of these smaller seal coats and different things just in the base service that we do? Is that not an option? Because one of the things that's going to come from the constituents that they're going to ask me is, every time we do a road, we not only have the cost of the road, but we have the cost of the more engineering. And I want to be able to tell them that, hey, I can't answer that other than if they're bigger projects. If it could go into the base, the base cost of $16,000 every month.
I mean, I guess where are you looking to separate the distinction? Is it just seal coats? Is it mill and overlays? Is it, you know, if we're not touching utilities, is utilities the only time we're engineering?
Yeah.
And I think that's where the component comes in, is just because it's a seal coat project doesn't mean that we're not actually specifying, and there's risk and liability that goes with that design.
Yeah.
It's, although it, I mean, seal coats seem to be fairly simplistic projects just because of the time, the duration, and how fast they go. The level of effort that goes into the design and the components of that is, is still, I would say, I don't want to say as significant, but significant comparably to any other project where we were, where we'd be doing a utility replacement or actual street reconstruction.
Yeah. I think what I'm looking for is, you said to us $16,000 a month for administrative services, and when I read through each one of these task orders, it was called administrative services. So I need to know the difference between which one is which, because one of them, you said you'd do for $16,000, and now I'm finding out tonight that this is an administrative service that's not done. So I need to, I need to know. So when I come to it, if, if it is administrative, in my mind, it should go in the $16,000. If it's not, then we need to know. So I think the council needs to know what we're spending money on, and so we can prepare for that. That's, that's my look. The council might not agree with me, but I'm looking to know the difference, so I know.
So.
Go ahead.
Construction administration is, is basically what's referenced in this. It's administering the contract for the construction improvement that the city has between the contractor and the city. We're talking about general administrative items that are in the $16,000, which aren't tied to an actual design or project, and they cover a wide gauntlet of various things. It's review of the Les Schwab site, for example, and going through the planning commission meetings and working basically with, with planning and zoning in order to get those done. So there is a nuance. Yeah, we call it administrative, but there's a difference between construction administration from an administrative perspective and actual administrative services that would be under the guise of the city engineer. And so we can break that down and, and put it into more detail if we need more clarity. I thought we had clarity within the construction contract, but we can, I, I'm happy to break it down.
Yeah, the only reason I see it is, in there it said administrative. Since we're only doing the administrative services, we'll charge you 7.5% instead of 15. I'd never heard in the contract 7.5% was an option even, so I'm trying to get some ground here early on as we go. So we know where we're at with this, because it's $65,000. It is. And I'm not saying that it isn't something that you, you have the right to have, or you've earned, or the work is there. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, as a council member, I got to be prepared so I can answer it. That's all I was looking for tonight, was to have that discussion.
Yep. And I think we can break down the difference between, I, I think the, the term administrative is probably getting used a little too loosely in even how we presented it in the, in the task order. And we should be talking specifically about what is an administrative service and what is a construction, you know, when we're doing construction administration, construction contract administration.
Councilwoman Pelley?
On 11 and 12, I totally get it. Nine and 10, I think Councilmember Mortensen brings up a valid point. Did we, just for clarification, last year, did we pay a project fee on those things, or was it all in-house, and so we didn't have a project fee on our mill and overlay and on our seal coating?
That's typically the project that we do in-house, is the, is the seal coat and mill and overlay. So we would have paid, and to be clear, anytime we do a street, whether it's a mill and overlay, seal coat, reconstruction, there is the cost of the street.
Right.
Plus the cost of the engineering. Previously on seal coats and mill and overlays, we paid individuals within the city of Fergus Falls, their wages went towards these exact services. So this isn't like a new expense. It's now going to them as opposed to being in-house. And on any other street project we've ever done that we've hired a consultant, there's been a significant portion of the project that goes towards design and construction administration and oversight. So that, none of these are new costs, per se.
Bill?
In addition, I'm the, the microphone here. In addition to that, on those other projects that, where we were paying an engineering firm, say, you know, 20, 25% for these services on a reconstruction project, our city engineering staff was also charging time to the project. So we full-costed to those projects. Anytime engineering staff worked on a project, they billed their time to that project. So just, whether it was a mill and overlay or a reconstruction, for a building improvement, doing windows in City Hall a number of years ago, you know, city engineering staff as well as the architects, we cover all those costs in the project.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I've got one. As, as long as we're talking about roads, is there any way to level the blasted manholes? I mean, you drive through this city and you're bouncing all over the place. Is that part of engineering to make sure that all of that is done? Or what can we do for that?
Yeah, that is part of it. I, I can also tell you that on Public Works Committee and in discussions with Public Works, we're taking on those issues, specifically, I want to say on Union, there are a number of manholes, and I believe we're looking at them on Eastford as well, to coordinate with the county on getting some of those where we've got pretty depressed structures.
There's actually a rim you can buy or something, isn't there?
You can do a knockout ring that basically provides adjustment. It makes it a little bit easier. We have been, in talking with Public Works, we have been looking at the potential for putting in what's called a concrete collar. And so we'd actually pour concrete around the casting and basically spread the deflection out away from the actual manhole a little bit. And so those have not been notoriously used in town a lot. That's one thing we're looking at, potentially taking a look at here on, on some of the manholes that are on, at least on Lincoln.
Good, thank you.
So that is, and a part of that, you know, when we're talking about a mill and overlay, not so much on a seal coat, but on a mill and overlay, that's one thing that we'll be taking into consideration, that when they're basically putting that wearing course on, that the castings are getting adjusted appropriately.
Al?
I just want to follow up. Thank you for that comment, Jim. I appreciate that. You know, as we go down on, on Union there, you know, it, it's drastic. I mean, there's some drops like that in those manholes, and, and they're, they're crooked too. Now, wasn't that part of the deal with the road when that was done, what, two years ago? I mean, why, why did we sign off on that thing?
So part of, part of what that project encompassed, I got to go back and think back to that one, but that was a, was basically a pure roadway improvement. There were some manholes that were brought. There were some manholes that were brought up within the course of construction to look at because they're significantly deteriorated, old block structures that weren't originally part of the, part of the original bid in the original scope of work, and so they're coming, we're basically coming back to look to take care of those after the fact through Public Works versus as a part of the project. So likely what will, depending on the deterioration to the structure, what we'll have to figure out is, is whether or not it's as easy as going to be a ring replacement, you know, basically the rings for adjustment at the top of the, the top of the structure, or if, if it'll be any more significant than that, if we have to do rehabilitation of the structure.
Because I get, I get comments from constituents, you know, in Ward 3 there, Union, it's like, you know, this road has been redone, why is it like this? And I said, that's a good question, we, we need to find that out, and why it was okayed. But, you know, also too, maybe it would have been the time to, if you knew or somebody knew that that was bad, if you, you know, if this falls under engineering and design, so it seems like somebody dropped ball there because it was engineered, it was designed, and it's failing, you know, the old structure, the person would have known that, I would think. I don't know if it was brought up at the time or not for those who needed to talk about it, but it's really a disappointment to have a smooth road, and if you're not paying attention, you're going to hit one of those manholes, and, you know, it's no different than hitting potholes, so it's like, we could have maybe left it.
It, it's similar on Eastford.
I think we're deviating from kind of where, and obviously this was.
Thanks for the latitude.
Pre, pre kind of more, some in this.
I thought it was a good time to do it, as long as we're talking.
But it's also part of economic development in that we still need those struts and shock absorbers replacing some. With that, would somebody care to make the resolution approving number nine?
Some of.
Thank you, Jim, would somebody care to second it? Thank you, Laura, roll call.
Yes.
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 And basically, we have a similar resolution for task order number three, would somebody care to make that resolution?
I'll make that.
Thank you, Scott.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Laurel, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yep.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved, resolution approving task order number four, would somebody care to make that one?
I'll do that.
Thank you, Jim, would somebody care to second it?
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved, final one is a resolution approving task order number five, would somebody care to make that one?
I'll do that.
Thank you, Laurel, would somebody care to second it?
Second.
Thank you, Jim, roll call.
Yes.
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 Thank you, the resolution is approved. The next item, ordinance and resolutions, there are none. The next one is a presentation of claims in the amount of $1,772,154.9. Would somebody care to make that?
I'll offer the resolution to pay the bills.
Thank you, Jim, would somebody care to second it?
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott, any questions of Finance Director?
I'd like to lay out, Bill.
With that, roll call.
Yes.
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 There is no old business or unfinished business, no new business, miscellaneous announcements. There will be a meet and greet for the police chief finalists on July 15. That will take place to the general public, and between 5:30 and 6:30, I believe, at the, at the Public Library. On July 16, there'll be a committee of the whole, July 21, city of council meeting, and July 29 will be the next town hall meeting in this chambers. With that, the meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.
We have a retirement party for Deb on July 17, which is a Thursday from Kootenay to the library.
Can you, what was the date?
I think we should give Deb another hand because she stayed for the whole meeting.